Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Council of the City of Long Beach on Tuesday, May 16th, 2017 at 7:00 PM. I'm your local councillor Diamond.
Yes.
Councillor Ray Meldon.
Yes.
Councillor Moore.
Yes.
Vice President Romo.
Yes.
President Torres.
Here.
The other thing is that I just want to remind everyone that the Good Welfare begins at the end of the meeting. We ask that if you'd like to share with us concerns or have any questions, that you sign up for the Good Welfare now during the meeting, so that you'll have a chance to be able to share with us your concerns at the end of the meeting, once the Good Welfare portion begins at the end. The other thing that we'd like to remind everyone is that we have a three-minute limit on comments, and we need everyone to adhere to that because it is extremely important that we hear from everyone, and we do need to hear from them. And lastly, very important too, your questions may be answered by us, may not be able to be answered for legal reasons, or we may just not have the information to be able to share with you at the current time, but we certainly will be, will get back to you if the question cannot be answered here. With that, I will turn the meeting over to Mr. Frey. Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Council of the City of Long Beach on Tuesday, May 16th, 2017 at 7:00 PM. I'm your local councillor Diamond.
Yes.
Councillor Ray Meldon.
Yes.
Councillor Moore.
Yes.
Vice President Romo.
Yes.
President Torres.
Here.
The director of the senate is City Manager Jack Sherman, Corporation Council Robert Aristides, and City Controller Tristan Hansen-Hightower. We're now assuming to the flag. Okay, and welcome everyone to our city council meeting, and we will now begin our meeting with the update from our city manager, Jack Sherman. Alrighty, this Friday, May 19th, is Bike to Work Day, so we're encouraging everyone to ride their bike to work, to do so. I'm personally looking forward to it. As a reminder, the farmers market is back and will be open in Kennedy Plaza every Saturday through November 11th, and every Wednesday starting June 7th through November 1st from 9:00 to 2:00. Don't forget to bring your own bag, we look forward to seeing you there. Memorial Day weekend is just under two weeks away, on Sunday, May 28th, the recreation park will hold the 41st Annual City Manager's 10 Mile/5 K Race to Remember, dedicated to the memory of race founder Ralph Kathy, which we'll see here, we'll be there as well. And on Monday, May 29th, the city will pay tribute to our veterans with the annual Memorial Day Parade, "Rain or Shine" together with the American Legion and Veterans of Foreign Wars. Coming up on Saturday and Sunday, June 34th, from 10:00 to 5:00, the city and arts in the plaza will co-host the arts on the boardwalk, a fine art and handmade craft show on the Long Beach Boardwalk between Edwards and Long Beach Boulevard. Vendors will be selling a wide variety of items, and we look forward to seeing everybody there. For more information, visit longbeechandwide.gov/artsandcrafts. And coming up on the weekend of Saturday, June 10th, LGBT Network is producing Long Island Pride, Private Beach, in partnership with the City of Long Beach, for its home statewide market, New York Ranch, the Island of New York Ranch. As a reminder, possibly events covered by LGBT Network and their sponsors. And finally, this evening, I'd like to let everybody know that the 2017 Beach Passes went on sale this past Saturday. All of our beaches will be open this summer, and we're looking forward to a wonderful season. Beach passes can be purchased seven days a week at the Zeeville Building located across from the ice arena. Hours of operation of Monday through Friday, 9:00 to 6:00, and weekends from 9:00 to 4:00 until June 25th. For more information, visit Long Beach and Long Beach Department of Public Safety. Thanks. Okay, thank you, Mr. Sherman. Just a last reminder, and that is that, again, we hope that everyone will adhere to the kind of decorum that we expect at any government meeting. Again, we, and that, it means that we don't encourage anyone to speak or cross-talk against anyone else here, regardless of whether or not we agree with what is said or not said. And again, we ask for everyone to keep to that rule that we have. And I want to thank you again, everyone, for being here. Mr. Frey, are you ready?
First item will be public hearings for the purpose of giving citizens an adequate opportunity to publicly present their views on a general summary of the capital improvement program for the five-year period from July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2022. And also, the bond organs authorizing various capital projects in and for the city, Long Beach, Nassau County, New York, stating the estimate cost to New York $14,973,000 appropriated, set out therefore, including the expenditure of $5,525,950 expected to be received in state federal aid, authorizing the issuance of now-to-exceed $14,973,000 bonds of sensitive money set up appropriation.
Okay, this is our annual capital plan. As a reminder, Capital Improvement Plan advances projects to improve the health, safety, and quality of life of residents, designated projects that will make improvements to the city's infrastructure. In a moment, our deputy commissioner of public works is going to give a presentation that the city court is setting up. Projects included this year are a continued commitment to roadway reconstruction and road resurfacing, upgrades to our water and sewer deliveries, treatment facilities, improvements in the recreation center and ice arena, thermal imaging cameras, and personal protection bailout system for the city's park park. I'd ask for deputy commissioner of public works to give a presentation over here to the flag.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jill Ferriello. I'm the deputy commissioner of public works, and I'm going to give you a presentation tonight on 2017, 2018's capital budget and capital plan. Before I get started, I just want to mention that the plan is actually on the city's website, so you can access it in that format if you'd like to see it. This presentation will also be on the city's website tomorrow, if you'd like to see it, it'll be available. And as far as this plan, there are a recent project that's in the plan that's on the website, is backed up by a specific worksheet that's in this book that we keep on public works. So there's a really detailed description of every project that's in the plan, just as a little background. Okay, so let's get started. The Capital Margin and Capital Improvement Plan advances projects that improve health, safety, and the quality of life of city residents. They address issues in priority order, making government more efficient and responsive. The projects, uh, that is addressing a continued commitment to roads and drainage, shoreline, transportation, public safety, which is an improvement for police violence assets, buildings, grounds, which is trees and new plantings, parks to rehabilitations and forms of playgrounds, technology, and sewer, and water. And we also have other categories, which is projects where we're developing. How are projects selected? Well, there's many components of how to select projects. By visual inspection, consultation of review with other commissioners, department, superintendents, and chief plan operators, discussions with the DPW staff, priorities identified throughout previous years, projects that have completed design bills, needs and mandates identified by regulatory agencies, that is, like the online and the conservation and the offhand. Projects identified, previous outreach programs that are not yet completed, projects covered by grant funds and the super swamp sandy to cover the problems. How is the capital number of town? Well, basically, it's broken down into a, by general fund, the super fund, and the water fund. The general fund has seven categories, which is roads and drainage, shoreline, transportation, public safety, grounds, parks, and technology. The sewer fund is comprised of the collection system, the water pollution control plan, and the water fund is distribution system, the treatment plan, and equipment. Just giving you a quick overview of last year's capital plan, there was $7.4 million from the general fund that was allocated. We proposed 110 projects, we successfully completed seven of those projects. The main project will be carried over to the current unit, which is this year's project. Just want to get a little rundown of some successfully completed projects, we have some photos up there as well. The first one is far as the street reconstruction, that's the photo on the right there showing, successfully completed project that we did this past year. Party Street is going to be paved by, probably by the morning light, they're going to apply the station to that project. Some along the way, the Old Lady, California, Nebraska, Long Rock, between the beach and the trees. Swallow Fox, the part of the lot is the ice arena playground that we recently rehaved in the end of last year. The great project, it's an idiot park, it's a local park. We also rehabilitated the Fluxu playground as well, which came out great, that was actually a recovery. Generally, really good. We put some more into the ice arena, replaced all lockers, we've been able to sure the rain that it was. Buildings, we've done the MLK roof. First phase, I should say, of the MLK roof, the second phase, here we've done the next couple of weeks, maybe the MLK roof. That was a change order, but they had to have temperature rise over fifty degrees, we've got to have that, so we'll give you that next couple of weeks. Senior Senate Bill, this meeting is on right now, it'll be done shortly. One thirty-two West Vine Street, San Feshin Garage, it's about ninety-nine percent complete. And the Maplewood Boulevard House is coming on May 16th. As far as sewer, these two projects I listed there were basically regulatory compliance issues. They were very big projects that we finished in December. One was construction of the coronation building, which is that building on the top right there, that's the way from the back to the end to a tree. That was a million-dollar project, we had to reduce the chlorine that comes out of Long Beach from down to twenty-five milligrams per liter. We also had to rehatch the sand for the material that's pictured to the left. That was a two-million-dollar project, that was destroyed, it was super swamp sandy, and we just got it back on, uh, four years. As far as the water treatment plant, that side on the bottom right is a originally installed backup generator. It's installed at elevation fourteen, it's probably the safest place in Long Beach, it's one of the highest places in Long Beach for backup generator. And that was recently installed, so it's another successful project. So what's next, it's coming up. So we have another exciting new plan coming up. Six hundred block or something, that's currently out there, right now in our office. We're busy doing the first week of June, and we'll continue to shape construction if this plan is passed in early July. That's a six-month project. The one hundred block west market, that's the photo we picked it up on the right there. Street is in really poor condition. We have an RFP out now for design services for that one. So that would probably be done so far next year, but maybe in March. But that's another project that's in play. We've got a whole lot of E Street between Pennsyl and Nevada. We successfully did the first phase a year and a half ago between Pennsyl and New York, and we're finishing that now. Edwards Boulevard Resilient Connectivity, that's called the CAP program, it's a grant program. We received approximately $1.2 million, the rebuild date grant, Edwards, between Park Avenue and Boardwalk. It's called the Transportation Alternatives Program Grant. We also have money, about two and a half million, what's called Park Avenue Resilient Connectivity. It's basically to rehab Park Avenue West and Long Beach Trail, we're putting in bike lanes, new curb sidewalks, newly profiling the pavement, asphalt, double lights, and we can connect that. As far as the shoreline, that first project that I mentioned there, for a more short, quicker structure protection project, it's a twenty-seven-dollar project, that hopefully kicks off in the next six months. It's basically going to, you know, obviously, it's a city block, the shoreline, we have two railroads, the bridge. We're finally going to be undertaking that project, putting a bulkhead, stormwater pump station, address the plug on the roadside, that happens at Pine, constantly, and we're restoring, we're going to be addressing that, that's a really great project. It's a four-on-four, community-based project, that's a community-based project. Then we have to do a rise in the community reconstruction, bulkhead replacement, that's twelve and a half million dollar project. We're hoping to get that moved to two by the end of this year, and so replace bulkhead in various locations. Our buildings, we're going to invent a lot of project plans this year, it's a complete renovation of the city council chambers back here. LDA will hit, LDA will have to go to second floor, we're doing work in Los Angeles, we have housing renovation, we're getting flood proofing that building, we're putting in flood doors, all the air is in that building, putting a new ground lift, it's a five-to-a-million-dollar project. As far as parks, we're going to rehatch the ice arena locker rooms, which are in the core shape of the ice arena. Public teams, which is the police and fire department. We've got neutral vehicles, which is a police bomb desk for the police. New traffic signage markings, and citywide security cameras. Providing a permit, they have internal control, which you have, and personal protective equipment, which Jack mentioned, too. As far as water, we have $2 million in management capital plan, we need to put another $500,000 for that, which is, so now we have $2.5 million essentially, and the intent is to address a couple things. To address the interior rating system, and also to address the walks, which is a really, a really aging, aging structure area in the city. There's no chance of watering it yet, it's on point, since I've been here, it's a project that's been actually moving. So now we're $2.2 million to sell, we're also going to do a map for the water system as well, trying to make sure on the bottom. The sewer projects, a lot of sewer projects are, have to give the data for regulatory issues, such as primer settling tank, then that's your place, gear drive placement, ammonia mobile, under regulatory requirement to reduce ammonia to twenty-three milligrams per liter to one milligrams per liter. They have digesters, we want to implement sewer network program, and the sewer maintenance. In summary, the plan summary, public works will press $6.2 million in 2017, 18, general fund improvements this year, $3.5 million for water supply. That spreadsheet at the bottom basically summarizes that, of course, in the first column, basically $6 million over $97,000. General fund, $2.4 million for sewer payment, $850,000 for water. This next, uh, this next slide, potentially, it takes a debt service for the, for this, maybe we could just say, quick thing on that.
So just to keep, I'll give you a few quick notes on the debt service of this capital plan. So Moody's continues to cite, cite the city as having a manual debt burden. It's currently only eleven percent of our total operating budget, which is very low compared to, I think this family is very low compared to Moody's analyst trends. Additionally, this, this year, the city's portion is the lowest, is lower than it was last year. The balance that, um, that's not covered by the city, it will be reimbursed a hundred percent by federal and state grants. The city continues to try to make improvements and upgrades to its facilities and infrastructure, while trying to limit as much as it can the burden on the taxpayers. So we do look to get grants where we can and apply them to projects that make sense for the city. This particular capital plan was definitely prepared with an honor on debt service. We have a map falling off over the next few years, but we'll see our debt service decrease. So those decreases more than outpace the increase that will go on for this, for the, for the church plan and the general fund. It will almost offset it entirely in the waterfront, and it does help towards the sewer fund. This slide actually talks about our constitutional debt limit. So we are tasked with staying under one hundred percent, obviously, but we don't want to get anywhere near that. Right now, the city, we have about 25.47 of its debt limit exhausted. There are many cities along, I should say, in New York State, that have debt limits upwards of fifty, sixty, seventy, and even eighty percent. So this is what we talk about, but we mean that Moody's claims of being a man of the debt burden. Compared to what we are allowed to issue by law, we're nowhere near that right now. And just one last thing, so I mentioned it before, so our debt as a total of our operating budget is only 11.4%. I think it's been mentioned previously that it's upwards of thirty percent, but that's just not the case. And we just wanted to make sure that we made a point to talk about how we do look at our debt burden. We look at it every year, we look at it every month when we pay debt service, and it is something that we are trying to manage as a city. We are proud that Moody's helped things that we have managed with debt burden, and we continue to work to keep it that way.
And we're proud that we've done over $120 million, whether it were, and super swamp sandy, and continue to build stronger, more secure. Thank you very much.
I want to thank our deputy commissioner Fabrigo for that presentation. I particularly was very happy to hear about the work that's going to be in the walls. For many years, we've known, it's like a ticking time bomb, and it's because of the kind of, uh, the infrastructure that's been there for many years, and how we need to improve it, so I want to commend the public works for tackling that, you know, that has really been, you know, not ignored, but of course, no work has been done or attempted in the last twenty, thirty years in that area. So we're very happy to see that happening. I do have a question for Mr. Fabrigo, and that is that the recent work at Lindell, the bulkhead there, was that work completed?
The work at Lindell, simply, the family bulkhead is incorporated, is incorporated in that project.
Okay. So there's still, it needs to be done.
Absolutely.
Okay, very good. Are there any questions from the council for deputy commissioner?
I just have a follow-up on speaking of the walks, it is one of the most detrimental things, I think, in the city. But what work has been done, I realize we put away $2 million last year, and then a half million coming, but there has been some consistent work happening with, because I know there's, there's, I can't count them. Can you just talk about what we've been doing?
Well, with this money, the first thing we ought to do is we're going to have a question proposals, this way. Which basically, if you're a retaining consultant, it's going to design probably a phased approach, meaning the first section between Bram and New York, and then the second between Bram and Lindell, probably in two separate phases. And we'll get a good idea of our budget once we do one section. So we put out an RFP, and we're going to basically retain it, consulting, to live in here.
So we're basically talking about abandoning the water supply that's already there?
The intent, we're asking at least, is that we're going to find out the water at the center, so we'll run behind the house and then the walk. So you have orange diameter, sixty, seventy, or whatever, maybe adjacent to, it's probably all catch on, the sewer needs to fight. So you have them right next to each other running behind the house, which is right there, if you remember. So we were proposing that it was on the actual, one-way, down the actual walk, with the walk down, so then you have separation that is required between sewer and water. That's, that's how, that's what we've been trying for all these years, basically. Like when we had Park Avenue, maybe this year, we put out T's, twelve, twelve, English T's, to set it up so that street, so we can actually use the project. So there's, yeah, groundwork has been laid for that, same day feature, you know, there's, there's T's there, so that street, that's where we can kind of go down the walks. So again, we've done a lot of that, but it's more time to cover that.
That's very proactive thinking, because we don't want to wait for there to be an emergency in the walks, to then tackle it. And I think that that's, that's very, very good news. And I say this because I recently was living in the walks of our house, we've been working on, and I saw that this is something that was a ticking time bomb, and we're glad that we're tackling, you know, this after all these years. Thank you, thank you so much, and thank you, Mr. Romo, for that comment. Are there any of the comments, yes, from Mr. Moore?
Yeah, briefly, can you just talk, talk a little about the GIS system, in terms of that water system? I think it would be helpful if the residents have some further information.
Yeah, we basically put, I believe, $200,000 in capital budget from having our water system and sanitary sewer system. Right now, someone antiquated, we have a problem with the water system, you know, superintendent, the water will come to me, and I have a reminder in my office that basically has, shows intersections and balance of those intersections, and overall map of the city. Everything is hard copies, nothing digital, nothing, it's somewhat okay. Sewer system is exactly the same way, you know, you have hard copy maps in the city that shows the whole system. You know, a lot of this is tutorial knowledge, unfortunately, a lot of things aren't applied. So we're looking to have one comprehensive GIS system to map the water system, any fire sewer system. Right now, we do have a GIS system, but the only thing that's mapped on it, we do have a small sewer system. Now, we do have a complete map of it, and it's actually a really excellent system. You could actually put on a cat face, and it'll say when the last time it was cleaned, and puts the inward of it, what's the rim elevation, so it's very, very good. So we want to have that same ability with the water and the sewer system, which we just don't have right now.
That was a nice one, I think, thank you.
On the requests for citywide security cameras, do you know if there are any Greek internal agencies?
We don't have a police mission here, you might be able to get that better, that was one of the police, uh, agency budgets.
I want to welcome Commissioner Tackney, and thank you for being here.
The citywide camera program is a multi-year program, and this would be phase two. Phase one, where the inflation cameras in the city hall on the two floors, we're looking to talk, I think, do initial target hard in two building, with a front desk person possibly putting in, or hopefully putting in a magnet counter, which is a very effective, at the lobby, where we have some different key functions to have access devices to city hall, so you can module it. When the cameras and city members are having meetings, and there's no one in the building, you keep getting applause. So that's just part of something to do in addition to the cameras. The next phase of the camera project is on the boardwalk from Long Beach Mono Boulevard to Magnolia Boulevard. They will capture every image of some of the, of on the boardwalk from the ramps, and then there'll be mid-blocks that'll capture activities on the boardwalk. Today, we were very fortunate, we just received two new Chevrolet Caprices, which are lots more cars, a lot less weight, and we're going to put those on the south, southern posts, so they can have stuff on the boardwalk to address some of the concerns we have up there. We have a dog epidemic, if you will, we have a skateboard epidemic, a tiny trouble that, that's been known to be on the boardwalk. Frequently, we've seen these violations, so that's our next phase. The phase after that will be to completely video the entire transportation facility, as well as the surrounding city hall, and then we hope in the future to expand it here into covering all the city facilities, water park, sewer park. The infrastructure of our city services that are on fine sheet, will eventually get to all of our parks, getting them videotaped with a long-term plan to put all of this access into the OEM that we hope to build with the grant that we got from PETA.
Thank you, and I just have one question, I do realize that, you know, the cameras, an excellent question that councillor Mandel mentioned. Now, in knowing that we do have these violations, such as dogs, for example, urinating on the boardwalk, um...
Well, they're mere presence on board is a violation.
Absolutely, absolutely, now, seeing that and having recorded that, does that mean that they will be fined?
No, the criminal procedural law requires a series of things to occur for a violation, which is the most minimal offense that you could commit. It might be committed in a police officer's g-reck, or a report, and the police presence. So we, right now, take this videotape. I don't know that that will change. I don't know that that will change, I mean, laws come to a line, they take everything, so that may be something, but right now it's legislatively prohibited.
Okay.
Just a quick, Commissioner, as you go through several phases, do you anticipate any kind of job creation, someone who wants to monitor the various phases with respect to security?
The, when we get a fully operational OEM, that would also give the off hours or non-herds hours, the city manager's desires of having, which is what is commonly called the three-one-one system, which is similar to our notification system we have now, but would be more comprehensive, and that would require additional personnel to man. In addition, as long as we're talking about cameras, we have just installed the license licenses throughout the city, and in one week we have one million units. So we do anticipate having a lot of activity from that. That's a budget question, why we increased the impound fees so drastically, is because we feel that we will have tremendous success with this program. Today, we were using to work out teams, and in twenty minutes, we located and arrested two victims. So we're very, very successful. We're averaging a hundred cars a day that are potential impound arrests for various charges, you know, the ethical damage, the harsh weeds, so about seventy percent are good to go. So we're going to stay on top of that, and hopefully that will help out also.
Will there be a special mailing for our local residents, just, I guess, I guess you have to see management, will there be a special mailing to educate our residents with respect to...
There will be some public education, I don't, I don't anticipate a full mail.
Okay.
We have to work on presentations by these people, and the big thing that the public really needs to know, and they want to know, this information is not for sale, this information is for police information only. It's not going to be given out, it's not going to be shared with other agencies, this is just going to be our internal information. We're only going to hold it right now, based on the number of reads, it's expensive to store this kind of information, so our plan is to only hold the information for twenty days. So it's not, it's not really a big brother thing, it's really a safety initiative to get people that should be on the road, and catch bad guys that are overdoing police, and it also will help us locate Amber alerts to the city children, and sub alerts to the city adults.
Okay. Ms. Dunn, do you have a question?
Yes, thank you. First of all, I think it's wonderful that we've worked on installing that, and I think it would be good, I echo Councilwoman Moore, with regards to letting the public know exactly what it is, and exactly what we intend to do with information, so there isn't any concern on their part. Thank you for working on, putting this together. My question was more with regard to the shoreline projects that are in, that are, you mentioned that the critical infrastructure protection project started six months, but do you have a timeline in regard to how long it will take to complete once it's started? I know there's been issues with funding, but once it begins, what's the timeline for it to begin? And is that the same with regards to community reconstruction?
I think they have, they have a bridge that one that has to be done, which is...
Okay, thank you.
Deputy Commissioner, just one last question regarding the shoreline, please, you know, I think, we, we do receive calls all the time about our, our shoreline by the, where we have our utilities, and where are we, where are we with making that a more, a safer shoreline for our utilities, and, you know, of course, that community that's right there? So it's, it's a concern that people have.
We've had quite a few obstacles with this project, I guess. One is the failure of the railroad to sign on this project, which is actually very disconcerting. You know, they've had, I don't know, considering their, their facilities are, unfortunately, you know, they failed to sign on all projects, which unfortunately is a requisite for us to move forward, and that's probably a base obstacle. Second obstacle is the extension on this from the Armored Port, and DC, and the other reservoir, DC, that's what we're working out, we're in the process. Then we have some town heads that are drawing the land, some of that land that were going to be worked, you know, so to speak, in their land, and, you know, they recently told us they want to compensate for that property, so trying to work through that. So there's definitely some obstacles, town heads, they should be worked out, park issues should be worked out. Railroad is the most frustrating, you know, and we're going to have to establish another level of this, I don't know if it's still recovery or, I don't know if it's all listening to this.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you again.
Do you think these, these shoreline projects are really a priority for residents and the city council to be expected? We need to reach out to other elected officials, different levels of government, I think that's what we need to do.
Yeah, absolutely, I'm not, I'm a little tentative with the railroad, it's very frustrating. It's all the small rooms, use their power, it's, it's, it's very effective, because they will solve a lot of problems.
Sure.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner.
Okay. Other than, oh, yes. Dubow, it's right, it goes from my head, I don't know what's happening, because...
This is my first time here. Dubow, a couple of questions for the bulkhead. The last time I spoke to you about it, it was about the design, we're only thirty percent, forty percent with the design, what does that say in terms of the project? How close to plan to being completed are we, and how close to work actually being started?
I'll let the Deputy Commissioner speak too, but I think that's what we just, both two...
Well, just by your understanding, just, you know...
And in addition, I just want to remind everybody that these projects are not at the scope of the capital plan, they're separate funding, but obviously they're absolutely critical for the city, we're relieved that the city doesn't have to pay the...
Right, it's twelve point six million.
Right.
So I just want to give you a quick...
Yeah, I think the, I think New York or two is different, than the North Shore, for the protection program project, New York Rising Community Destruction Project, the city was given twenty five million to, used pre-projects, one was replaced the bulkhead, the second one was the old Yonkers, I believe, and the curb was drainage improvements. The old Yonkers, which I mentioned in the slides, actually progressed really nicely, probably within the next six months, you're going to start seeing construction on it, so we'll see, right behind that wall, actually, that's where I was going to, we'll see that work on going, you know, the water. Back to your question, original question. One of the problems we're having, this is, is a, this is a bunch of results of storm recovery, and the funding has been problematic at best. We were basically allocating twelve hundred million dollars to the government board, and that's where the problems come in right now. We deal with the result of storm recovery, modify that budget, it's been very slow, very difficult, and that's really where the problems, where we get over these projects, you know, it's basically thirteen million dollars, no progress, twelve hundred million dollars, we're trying to figure out a way to deal with that.
Part of the issue is, I know New York Rising has a deadline for residents to bulkhead, and I think that might be kind of a personal context, if the city's not going to get around to doing this in the next couple of years, me and us and other people, but I'm, I'm not sure, have, have an issue. Do I, do I get funding from New York Rising and spend money that way? And obviously, there's that, the trouble, all my expenses was New York Rising doesn't, but, or do I rate the city? I mean, I think that's part of it that you mentioned, that the town heads said looking to pay them to have a beginning to that, we're going to debate, or is it that...
That's a separate issue on the North Shore, for the construction project, that's one before, as an issue of, 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 that's all different, because we have, there's no bulkhead that exists in there. We're trying to establish a line between the railroad and the bridge, and the line that we established, we're looking at survey, shows some problems that were speaking to that, so...
Are they using it?
As long as we can behold it, it's worth something, that it would give to us recently, we've heard that they want seven dollars for it. So it's about eight million, twenty thousand, seventy, seven, you know, around three hundred thousand, I should Google, you know, so, that's something we, we're never negotiating, we haven't negotiated. But is there, is there all the current music, all mounted up, two completely different projects, one's motion, one's structural protection, twenty million dollars, and we have New York Rising, see all the money, twelve hundred million dollars, all separate projects.
So there's sort of, there's, there's a start date for the bulkhead?
I don't imagine, I can't do this all right, right?
My other question is, and I spoke to you about it, the check route, do you check routes, put it against the street, they're absolutely useless. And I remember you spoke to me about it, that they need to be maintained and then not be maintained, because they're, is their money, if they're, in this, in the budget for a hallway, do you maintain the zombies thing? Because every time, we had a hard time the other day, the street's flooded, because that's up there still, because there's stuff that gets squashed there. The design went, either the, either the check out design is poorly, or the drain itself would just open on, on the, on the curbside, that's totally open, so if there's any debris that's there, just flush it to the street, and stuff could be checked out, and then it's useless, you know, they're cleaning that, it needs to be maintained on a regular basis to go to fully checked out for it, otherwise it just, it just started everybody to put it checked out. There's definitely money in the capital plan for replacement, they were...
They're going to do many new ones.
But they were replaced, they were replaced, you're, you're in a hand for that, and to replace it every couple of years, because if they're not being maintained, it just, it just does money, just for maintenance.
This is an absolute monologue, I know that.
You're right, right. And, and I pointed out to the Commissioner that the, the way the, 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 still drained itself is, you have a, the, the punt that's on the street that has the drainage, and then on the curbside, it's open, and that's, if there's some way of blocking that, or if there's some other drainage thing, that would solve, I think, a lot of the problem.
The curb, isn't it?
Yeah, the curb, the curb, you know, six, eight inches, that, that, someone has a jack, that'd block it, flush it to the...
Interesting you said that, but we actually, all of the projects, we have eliminated the curb, like, for that reason.
Good, well, you didn't want it to end at Kirkwood Street, just, you replaced it to the end of Kirkwood Street, now, and now it solves a lot of problems.
Yeah, that's not the issue, but I understand, it's possible, you know, if, if something could be, that's Jerry Rick, or some, some...
There's a way, there's a way to retrofit it, and then clean the down that, and then maybe it'll work.
Well, this is why it's so important to hear from residents on, on these things.
It's, it's an ongoing problem, but it was replaced ten years ago, and debris gets squashed there, and it's just, because they've got it replaced again, like, a year or two ago, and it's still, it's still an issue, you know, it's, it's a constant issue.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, I think the entire canal is, people are very concerned, I think, around the North Park area, and like the Deputy Commissioner was saying, that, you know, we do have money that were, you know, allocated to us, it doesn't look like it's going to cover the entire cost, but we, we do have to tackle this in one way or another, and it's, it's absolutely right. So we, we appreciate you coming up here to do that.
It just, it gets, it gets very frustrating, having to go through Sandy, having to rebuild the house, have the house elevated, and then I got to put my clothes on, it's a, it's a, you know, it's an issue, we should have your back.
Yeah, so, thank you. We have...
I just want to follow up, you know, if you could just get a, I think that's really interesting, talking about retrofitting some of the drains to stop some of the trash and maybe making it to the, to that last valve, and if you could maybe come up with a price, or just...
Yeah, it's interesting what's happening.
And maybe we can do a test on one of the, one of the canal blocks, and see if that actually helps, or, or, maybe come up with...
What's happening too is those, they pull the curb box, and it's also an issue with the lava, you know, every stone that we have, one of the, one of those, one of them, and they're difficult to fix, so now we've totally gotten away from those.
Okay.
Putting in flush breaks, just trying to see what's...
Maybe, so you can, you can, you can price it, and see if we can maybe do a high level unlock, and see if that helps at all.
Definitely.
Mr. Dubow, it's good to see you. Please take your entry to the record and...
Maybe Dubow, this is not the first time that he's mentioned that, we've been talking about this for six months, three years, if not three years, and it's not interesting anymore. I mean, that keeps being the, that's interesting, and yeah, that, yeah, we've heard that's a problem, nothing's getting done about it. I'm tired of hearing that it's interesting. I'm also a little tired of, of hearing about the bulkhead, and now we're hearing that it's not going to cover, is that going to happen? Is there a chance it's not going to happen? That the bulkhead is, is it going to get done somehow?
Right now, we're working on the finances as well.
Okay, but is it going to happen? Somehow is it going to happen, or is there still a chance that it's not going to happen? Because I've been given a deadline from New York Rising for a fraction of what it's going to cost, but something has to get done, but I've got to get it done before the end of the year if I'm going to use New York Rising money.
That's good.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm getting annoyed, because we've been talking about this for years and years, and now it sounds like it may not, is there a chance it's not going to happen?
Well, no, we've been allocated money to do this, to do this with the money, and it's got to begin, at least to, with the money that we've been given to do this, so yes, the answer is it's got to be done, or else we have to return money. We want to use the money for what it's needed.
Or else our, 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 the entire north side is not going to be protected, it's not just going to be our house and our property, it's everybody else's house that's going to be affected, which is why this has to be done, see why, it's not...
This is why we fought for this project, this is why we fought for this project, and this is what we've been communicating to storm recovery to make work.
So when is it going to get started?
Unfortunately, I have to pay for it, you all have the whole process, it's, the whole process of storm recovery, and it's...
We just have to keep pushing to get this going.
Well, yes, that's a community habit, though.
Well, we don't have something for you to do at this point, but I think that, appreciate the question, because if, if and when there's something that we need in terms of communicating advocacy, we won't be shy about asking for it, for sure.
I mean, because it's, it's getting worse, it's not just staying the way it was, it's getting worse. The land ends up falling into the bag.
I mean, I could, I could respond, I think that this is a priority for each of us, each of us receives phone calls, email messages on a regular basis with regard to this exact issue, I think it's a priority for, for every one of us, unfortunately, we're kind of tied up with different agencies, and one of our different takeaways, it is a priority, and obviously, if we, it becomes an issue with different agencies, then we certainly be trying to continue to ask for your advocacy as well, but it is something that we intend...
We have, we have a deadline.
No, I understand, but it is something that we intend to work on, and advocacy on behalf of the, of the residents here, more specifically, for the...
It doesn't get done anymore.
We, we'll have to get back to you, and, and again, you know, Mr. Dubow, thank you for coming up and sharing with us. I will ask also that if there are any other comments on this first item, actually, the item regarding capital improvement, let's go ahead, and welcome. We just need your names to the record.
Nina Fiore, just a quick note on the, on the cameras on the boardwalk.
Yes.
We tend that to tend, or there's a tendency of the city to, to use this small section of the center of town, so we're going to put cameras on the boardwalk too, as a deterrent. Well, why is only being done between, I think it was Monroe and Manolia, we've had numerous problems down in the west end, pushing the boardwalk, the vandalism, vandalism, the boot being tossed over the boardwalk, we've had a number of reports with the police department for that reason, but why are we only doing it in those sections? And why are we looking at it in some places? I mean, if you look, if you look at, there's two empty lots right now, there's two empty lots.
I'm sorry, I'm going to finish up.
I'm just saying, there's two empty lots, and there's a lot less residential currently in that area, so we should probably be trying to come a little bit more of a residential portion.
That's a very good question. If you have any other questions for our Commissioner, let's take care of it right now, so that we can take care of the answering your questions if we can.
Yes.
Deputy, is that the only question you have for the...
That's just...
Wonderful, wonderful, thank you, thank you, Mr. Fiore.
I guess I wasn't clear, I said at the beginning it was in phases, that this is the initial phase, because this is where our most of our activity is, most of all local events, we have every intention of expanding it east and west until we get the entire boardwalk. Those are additional phases, but that will be definitely ahead of doing campuses and parks, because those are vulnerable issues, we still might protect all of the city's property. So this year, what we're budgeting for, to try to be reasonable on the taxpayer, and what work we can, the scale of what we can actually accomplish, that this is the first phase of the boardwalk, and it will be extended east and west.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions on this item that we're discussing with the capital improvement folks? Yes, please come forward. Mr. Bennett, good to see you.
Good evening, John Beddell, I know you guys are used to me coming up here.
I know you guys are used to me coming up here and hammering away at you. And actually, I'd just like to compliment you. This is a very well-balanced, well-thought-out capital plan. Just a couple of, I'm looking more for clarifications than anything, just on a few things. There is money in here, part of the funding amount, critical facility resiliency. And I'm just wondering, what are those critical facilities? Six hundred forty thousand dollars. Sure. Critical facility resiliency, six hundred.
Yeah, it's under non-city funding, right? So it's not in this, in the heart of the capital plan? It's funding coming to us from outside.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's through this, it's through the CRP.
Okay.
Sorry, money that this state allocated.
Right, okay. You're right, I missed the, the wrong column, sorry, okay. Next one, we have a million dollars in there for a basketball court. Well, if we were rolling in cash, that would probably be a really nice thing to have. Is that really a priority?
It's, it's not in there, if you see.
Which, yeah.
It's put, it's in there in 2021, and it was a nice way of saying it's a potential someday project that will come to the joint board that is, is not on the radar screen for funding in the future.
Oh, okay. There is a.
I think I've been called out, so just be understanding of, hey, look, if you wanna do this, here's what I call, right?
Okay, so none of this money necessarily that would be bonded, I, would be allocated to.
Not at all, it's, while we show, you know.
So here's your wish list.
Right, you show out yours as potential stuff, what's on here for current is what's in this year's program within city funding.
Okay, which makes sort of an, we have a hundred thousand dollars in for another parking study. And I guess I'm just wondering, we've kind of studied parking from depth, we know what the problems are, and we maybe get to some implementation of some fixes, and put some money behind that. So just general comment?
Yeah, we have to do this, that's what essentially it is. Getting ready to build things and figuring out how to do it.
Okay. And then, just, instead of, there's some line items in here that have no numbers in them, they're all just line. So you have a line item, but there's no figures in them, it's just, you know. So I thought that's, maybe it was something you need to do.
Right.
And then for the, the water towers, there's over eight million dollars in the removal of water towers. I assume that's the old, the really old stand pipe.
Correct.
Is that, is that being replaced, or is that just gonna come down? And then one point gone by replacing it turned into wood pumps?
Right now, we're still evaluating that. We have an engineer in front of the road, Mark Luchio, on board.
Okay.
That's what we need to have in the overhead.
But the plan is that, now is that the wish list, because it's kind of pushed out, or is that gonna happen?
Oh, that's a habit.
Or it falls down?
Yeah, that's now, yes, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bendel, and we think you're an excellent question. Any other comments on this item, first item, capital improvement? Okay, with that, folks, we're gonna move on to our next item. Thank you for sharing your concern.
The call for.
For a vote?
Yeah, I'm all for it.
Do you have a call for a call?
Yeah, I have a call.
Okay.
So, I advise residents to authorize the adoption of a capital improvement program for five years, from July 1st, 2017 to June 30th, 2022, including. Could you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
A second?
I will.
Okay.
I'm happy to see that we made efforts to decrease the amount that we borrow in comparison to other municipalities. I'm also happy to see excelling the road construction, as well as other steps that are taken to ensure that the city continues to become more and more easy to comply. With that said, I vote yes.
That's one of the ones.
Yes.
That's one more.
Yes.
That's President Alon.
Yes.
President Lawrence.
Yes, I just wanted to reaffirm what Ms. Diamond mentioned. When we passed our balanced budget amendment here a few years ago, it, it simply said to the public that we cannot spend any more than we're receiving. And that's basically what we're, we've attempted to do here tonight. And I think that, well, we can see this is, we're following the rules and the law that we, we actually legislated here for this city council. My vote is absolutely yes.
And I am sure the bond organ authorized various capital projects in the city of Long Beach, Sasa County, New York, stating the estimated total cost there over fourteen million nine hundred seventy-three thousand dollars. Appropriating said amount therefore, including the expenditure of five million five hundred twenty-five thousand nine hundred fifty dollars, expected to be received in state and federal aid. Authorized the issuance of not to exceed fourteen million nine hundred seventy-three thousand dollar bonds of said city to find its appropriate. Could you just move the adoption of this item?
How long do you just say?
For a second?
I will.
voting on the other one.
Yes.
That's one of the ones.
Yes.
Yes.
That's President Alon.
Yes.
President Lawrence.
Yes.
Our third item this evening is a public hearing for the purpose of giving citizens an adequate opportunity, openly presenting their views on the general summary of the proposed operating budget for the year July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018.
Okay, we did a full presentation on the operating budget at the last council meeting. I will not repeat the entire presentation. I will simply give very short, brief hints and talk about more important, perhaps, what's, what's new. So quickly, in review, we have a cost to continue budget this year, where we reduce requested budget expenditures by two million dollars. We have merged our fiscal and fiscal recovery, which has generated seven point two million dollars back to the city's rainy day fund to date. A big thank you goes to the CSCEA for working with us to do projects in-house to make that happen. As a result, we're also able to transfer one million dollars from the FEMA fund to the general fund to provide tax relief this year. Speaking of the CSCEA, the new eight-year agreement generates four hundred forty thousand dollars in savings this year. We have management contributing to healthcare, which contributes forty-eight thousand dollars in savings. A bond rating improvements, two hundred thousand dollars in savings. Workforce realignment and annual, two million in savings. We see two point three million dollars in grant revenues this year, and we appropriate a total of seven hundred twenty thousand dollars from our fund balance to pay for the debt service on the deficit financing. So a simple way of looking at that is that a judicious use of our surplus will pay again this year and in the past several years for the previous administration's deficit. So all of that adds up to a smart recovery for the city, which allows us to stay again within the tax cap this year of one point two six. So let's talk about what is new in front of us this evening, at the request of the city council. I believe Councilman Member Mendel asked us to take another look, and I would congratulate our budget team for working hard, not only throughout the budget process, but in the interim. We see before us this evening a proposal to reduce the proposed water and sewer rate increase from two percent down to one percent, which is an average savings of eighteen dollars per household. We have a very simple amended package before us this evening regarding the general fund, the sum total of which reduces the total budget by four thousand five hundred eighty-four dollars. And I guess that's the quick overview of what's, what's going on.
Good, now I just want to bring everyone's attention to this little flyer that our city manager agreed from. The figures are here for you to take and to look at, and to, of course, if you have any questions, we, we welcome them. The other thing is that, of course, this, this has been a very difficult task to stay within the tax cap that we've, that we're challenged to do, and we've been able to do that, and we're able to do that, and still continue to move forward with the development of our city and the recovery of our city. You know, that some things have been slowed, and others, and we do realize that we're as concerned as you are utilities and the shorelines, and, you know, the fact that we're coming, you know, again, another storm season or something, and, you know, we are on a barrier island, and, and, yeah, we are, we're concerned. So we are gonna keep pushing for monies that we know that, or we can try to get to be able to do these projects.
Mr. President, sorry, I would just add, sorry, I missed it. I would just want to mention a couple of quick thank yous. You know, a lot of work went into the original draft, a lot of work has gone into always finding some little places for improvement. I want to thank the budget team. I also wanted to thank the city council for working collaboratively as part of the process. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention that the city council is part of the process, you know, asked to forego their possible increases here, which is a significant disaster as well.
And, hey, are there any comments from the council on the second item? Okay, are there any comments from the public on the second? Yes, Mr. Alon, sure.
So I was very pleased to see the U.S. state controllers bought it, I suppose, in our budget. And there were a couple of items on there I just wanted to ask about. One of them I've talked about with you, Christie, but I think for clarification purposes, it would be good to discuss with the public. In terms of the beach charges, that we haven't realized part of it because the, our beach season cuts our budget season in half.
Right, so a large part of our beach revenue comes in the May and June month, especially because we may as well sell all of our annual beach caps, all the rest of it. So we see over two million dollars in May and June alone. So you only see about a little less than half of what we expect for this year. Year to date, through, through March, it'll be really encompassed in July, August, and a little bit of September if the beach is open, and then May when we have a big push for annual classes. And then, you know, of course, June when we start opening catch and roll day, so we feel that's revenue deck. So that is normal, and it happens every year.
Okay. And, and the other, we'll talk about what I do is on the New York State controls, talk about overtime. And I just want to know what kind of controls we have, and, I mean, I know it's cheaper for us to pay overtime rather than hiring employees, but how are we controlling that? And that seems to be one of the expenses that is more difficult to control. What are we doing to try and control it?
Well, the first thing we've tried to do this year is to look at a more realistic budget, which is what one of the, one of the our state councils, we have been calling as far as they think we should go, but we also have to be realistic as far as what, you know, the city can afford to put on the budget as well. And we have to put control there. So we tasked each department last year to give us the service detail, where they outlined, detail by detail, what event, what items, as far as everything they use overtime for, even to the point of telling us whether it's their upper management level that, that actually puts in the overtime, or it's their, you know, their low level entry level employees that put in the overtime so we can average out an hourly rate and really truly project out what the overtime would be. This, that was last year, it was definitely what we experienced for everybody. And this year, we actually went one step further and met one-on-one with the department heads and went through all of that and revamped and wound up. We really do feel that our projections this year reflect doing that. But as far as overtime control, barring emergency reasons, of course, we do request that all overtime is requested and approached in advance. So first goes from the department head to their commissioner, and then it comes from me to, you know, to determine funding, and then it goes to Jack ultimately to determine whether or not it makes sense in this region at all. And I had to add at all levels in that process, it's questioned and looked at. So the fact that it is looked at also makes the department necessarily realize that, okay, I'm going to be asked questions, maybe it's time to use overtime, what I actually need to do for it. The other piece of overtime that they are stating questions, especially are our, 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 our. So the restructuring and the little bucks that we dealt with regarding that, we had to adjust to the overtime budget because there was a little litigation associated with the restructuring, and things of that nature. Together, Rob and I worked with part of Department Union Management this year, and we did actually put a new agreement into place, which caps certain overtimes, certain overtime buckets. And it also, they also gave some the effects of certain overtimes earned, but actually, the earned time versus cash payout. So between those two pieces, we really feel that we put the part of department overtime in a more reasonable charge, and we voted for that one.
I just wanted to make a quick general comment on the annual state controllers' budget review. Just as a reminder, I guess it was four years ago when the city went through the deficit financing process, there was discussion of, you know, what does that look like, what does it come with? And one of the things that we highlighted that it comes with is an annual budget review, which we welcome as a positive, you know, helpful step in the budget process. And candidly, I think the feeling was, you know, for a city that had gotten itself in the level of fiscal trouble and distress that City of Long Beach had been in in 2011, that, that's a helping, helping piece. So from our perspective, I think we're really gratified that, again, for the fourth year, the state controller in a quoting, quote, found that the significant revenue and expenditure projections in the proposed budget are reasonable, and that, you know, that's, we've gone through this process now exhaustively, and we've come out pretty good. We're, we're quite, you know, quite proud of that.
Yeah, savings sometimes is very painful, and particularly if at one point we didn't have the controls on these things, and, and it is painful, it's painful for all of us, but we're avoiding, you know, a downward rating by Moody's by doing what we're doing, and we will continue to streamline things as we go forward. Two excellent questions, Mr. Alon, thank you so much. Any other comments from the council? Any comments from the public? Yes, sir. Welcome, I'm glad you're here, and we just need your name to the record.
Sure, Bill Dodge, with the president of Long Beach COA. Just two observations on the budget. One was, the budget was characterized as a cost to continue budget. But then later on in the presentation, you added a one percent increase for the exams. Now, the exams work hard, they're certainly entitled to increases, but they're not contract employees. In fact, the only exam that can have a contract is Mr. Schneur. So it's not exactly accurate to call it a cost to continue budget. The second point is, three times in the last meeting, you brought up, Mr. Schneur and brought up the previous administration's deficit. That was a very important thing, the previous administration's deficit. In fact, it was brought up again today. However, the budget that you're presenting right now doesn't include any provisions for a COA that's without a contract for nine years, a PVA that's without a contract for two years, and a fire department that's without a contract for seven years. So that's eighteen years of pending contracts, that what essentially is happening is we are going to have the next administration saying, that's the previous administration's deficit. So it's just an observation that that wasn't really clear in the presentation that was brought up. But there will be eighteen years of deficit that move forward, because they have an active almost group conscience. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Dodge.
Thank you, thanks for that comment.
Any other comments on item number two, on our, the budget? And again, the optimization that we need to have for it? Yes, sir. Welcome, welcome, I realize you are.
My name is Michael DeLorey, six-two, walk.
Yes.
I have some handouts to give to the council.
Okay.
Just, they're labeled on top. I did contact Ms. Hightower in advance to give her my commentary, my questions. It's detailed, so I believe she's answered some, I'd like to just review it with you. And these may be redundant, but here goes. And the page double references are on the left of top. So I think it may be a conversation with Ms. Hightower myself and the city manager, but department income, there's like a six hundred sixty-five thousand dollar. but department income, there's like a $665,000 increase in item 0012. Could you basically summarize what that is? Is that increasing permittees or is it increasing? Hopefully not. Okay. Licenses and permits, revised 1617 budget was increased by the $104,000 on sale, find slash sale of property. I don't know if it's a sale of land, somewhere like that. Item 0027, same page miscellaneous, a $92,000 increase, which is 1623%, what's expected. State aid, same page 98. Some of which are highlighted. Hopefully, the highlights came out of your copies. Information technology, page 98. So a lot of these questions are on page 98, which is detailed. Another question I have is the lifeguard budget. Their requested amount is $152,500 higher. In other words, they requested a higher amount than what's in the proposed budget. Is there any particular request that was either postponed, denied, reviewed, or just said we don't need it, that may be covered under something else? The Magnolia daycare, $420,000 is $70,722 higher. My overall question is, the MLK Center had a budget item, and if you look forward, that may have been incorporated into another item in the budget. Am I limited to a few minutes? Okay. You won't have a copy for my, yes, what I'm asking. The sale of real property for $600,000, it's not recognized yet. When will it be? What was the contract with the property, kids like that? Page two, I think she has to get to, and hopefully you'll have a chance to answer some. Thank you very much. Thank you for your time, and thank you for the hard work that went into this budget.
Thank you for coming up and sharing these questions.
Thank you, my, thank you for the thoughtful questions. Thank you.
Chris, is that your?
So the first one, you mentioned the departmental income. The $665,000 increase, the majority of that is the slavery system that Commissioner Dack had spoken to. That's $600,000 of the increase. The balance is small increases in other charges like ambulance and bus fares and things like that. The fines on property, the current budget was increased $800,000 was the question. That is directly related to an insurance settlement prepared by Corporation Council related to safety damages. That's what that is. The miscellaneous revenue, that one on $92,000, these sources tend to change from year to year. So every year, we have some go on, some come off. So it's really just a difference between the different ones that are coming off and coming on. The state aid one, so yes, we do expect over $4.1 million through the end of the year, which was, which was your question. We receive over 95% of our annual per capita income from the aid from the state, which is 3.1 million of that. The balance of that is we only see the first quarter of mortgage tax from the state before March 21st, and we receive the last three quarters within the next six months from, from March. That and our New York State bus operation subsidy is what makes up the difference of that $4.1 million. Your question on the lifeguards, their request reflected the cost of keeping on the full patrol, which is something that we had tried last year. Jack, I'm just going to.
Yeah, I think that, real quick, after speaking with the chief, as well as the beach park folks, we, the recommendation was not to extend the hours late to the night this year, that the costs, that it costs in terms of running beach park later in the evening didn't make sense. And so what the lifeguard's going to do is they're going to run through later in the evening, but we're not going to officially have the beaches open. So that $150,000 would have kept the beaches open later in the evening.
To answer your question on the increase in the Magnolia Department, that definitely is a transfer of the full-time employees from the MLK Center. They were split between Magnolia and New York Services. But the balance of the MLK budget is now in the Recreation Department. So they took over managing of the facility, so they took on all the expenses related to gas, electric, cleaning supplies, maintenance, and so that nature, but using family, Magnolia took on the staff associated from MLK. And then the last, your other question was the sale of real property. Jack, can we speak to that? Okay. So we had budgeted a sale of real property with an analysis, we had brought in a company to do analysis on the City Y property. Turns out that the properties we were looking at in this current budget year are not in saleable condition, and the cost to get them there would protrude anything we would make on selling it. So that will not be realized this year, and in turn, we have removed it from the budget for next year. CBR, it has been tasked with finding other opportunities for the city, but until they recognize it, we feel that it's realizable, it will be removed from the budget.
So that, that has been removed from the budget?
Yes, it has for this year, yes.
Okay. Okay, very good. And Mr. DeLoree, thank you. Thank you so much for those excellent questions.
I just have one last follow-up. Page 100, first page, beach charges.
Okay. I'm afraid your time has expired. Again, we appreciate your help. You can see us at the end of the meeting, and we'll follow up with them, okay?
Christie, I'll just, let me try to.
Absolutely. So your question had been whether the 1516 increase was specifically related to the rate increase, and it's actually the chief part. So partially, it was from the rate increase on the annual beach passes, but the other piece was that we had a record attendance year in 2016. It was the hottest summer's arm record, so it's really a combination of the two. And as far as pride, there was nothing in this year's budget because we did not know that pride was going to happen than we did last year's budget. However, we do expect about $200,000 in beach charge revenue to, to get, and that allows for about half of the people to buy a beach pass on one of the days. It wouldn't be conservative budget to assume everybody coming to Pride is going to buy a beach pass on both days.
But that would be this fiscal year.
That would be this fiscal year, yes.
Okay, thank you so much. Excellent questions that we have on the, on the budget. Are there any other comments from the public on this item number two? I'm sorry, the three word. Okay. With that, we're going to move on to our next, but, item. Go down there, I have a motion at this time. Okay. Good point. Okay. Okay. Yeah, I make a motion to move to amend the budget at this point.
I'll second it.
Second, okay. Very good.
So this is not a motion to amend.
This is just a motion to amend. Okay.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
So item number three is a resolution authorizing the adoption of the operating budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2017, ending June 30th, 2018, appropriate sums set forth in area for determining and fixing the real estate tax limit. Would you introduce the adoption of this item as a amendment?
Introduce that.
We'll say.
I won't.
First, I just want to thank the budget team, and there were numerous meetings that took place and clear what you reviewed, the budget, the vital effort went into putting it together. I also want to commend the other council members on some of the modifications that went into, in the way that she goes past, including the removal of wages increases for the council members and increases that are included for others as well. I believe that the budget is fair and balanced and continues to maintain the important services that we offer to the residents of the city. I'm happy to see that stuff were taken to hold the line on overtime increases as well as increasing accountability to improve when, where overtime is provided. We've worked hard to ensure that we can do more with less in this budget, and I think it's clear that this legacy can have on our taxpayers as well. So with that, I vote yes.
Very good.
First, I just wanted to say how pleased I am that we have every year this annual budget review by the state controllers. I think it's an incredible opportunity to have additional eyes and double check what we do. My welcome. Second, I also wanted to congratulate and thank the budget team for the tremendous job in striking the balance between rising costs and the city's valuations while keeping the residents and businesses in mind to maintain the services that we pride ourselves on. We have the best city workforce anywhere. So with that, I'm very happy.
Yes, once again, I just want to commend the budget team for their hard work. As stated here, our aim is smart recovery, and smart recovery is all about making fiscally sound decisions that relates to the budget. Smart recovery is giving residents access to this information within the spirit of transparency, and smart recovery is also making the attempt to reduce the burden on the taxpayer. And so I believe we successfully did that this year, and I'm very proud to move forward with this budget. Having said that, I hope that we'll continue to move forward and fight hard to keep the tax costs relatively small for our residents, to reduce and relieve the burden, but also to continue to move forward with the spirit of accountability within our tech, within our workforce, and to find creative ways to move forward with evaluations, because evaluation is critical with respect to accountability. So with that, I say yes.
First, we're all.
I too would like to thank the budget team for all that hard work, Shari and Christie and of course, Jack. You know, we do talk about a cost to continue, and the cost to continue, the way I read the budget, is actually would be a 6% tax increase to just continue the services and the quality of life we had last year. So to get it down to 1.26, I commend all the department heads and the CSEA for really negotiating a contract with the messages of our residents in mind. And we will, as a council and administration, I'm sure, continue to fight to keep our taxes low, to maintain our quality of life, but also continue to provide the services that our residents expect and deserve with that kind of test.
Well, I can't really add anymore to the comments that the Council has made because they're, they're right on target. I can only add that anytime we stay within the tax cap and we get a little refund from the state, boy, that feels good when you get that check. And I think that this is something we look forward to again. Thank you. And my vote is absolutely yes.
The rest of the regular calendar. Page four is a resolution delegated to the city controller of the City of Long Beach, New York, powers to authorize the issuance of $6,800,000 tax anticipation notes in Subcity, or so much in order as may be necessary in anticipation of the collection of taxes limited for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2017, and to prescribe the terms for and contents of the virtual sound and credit enhancing of such notes.
Okay, so switching gears from the operating budget to recovery funding, this is a conversation that we have had before. So Long Beach's Superstorm Sandy Recovery Effort has spanned almost five years to date with expenses totaling over $121 million and related reimbursements totaling almost $116, I'm sorry, $106 million. Just as a reminder to everyone, that we all found out the recent FEMA process works as a reimbursement process. They don't generally upfront give money. So the city originally issued as part of financing that recovery, a $33 million revenue anticipation note to provide funding for the recovery effort. That grant is partially paid down until like 50, and fully retired in June 16 from direct reimbursement received from FEMA. In order to continue the recovery effort, the city issued a $10.43 million grant in September of 2014. See them steadily, obviously getting smaller. This, we hope is our last time around with this, is a $6.8 million short-term cash flow note will allow the city to continue recovery efforts and retire a revenue anticipation note as required by the state finance law. And conservatively, funds associated with this note are expected to be received within the next eight to 10 months. And this is, as Bruce Morris reminded me earlier today, a helpful way of thinking about in terms of being homeowners, this is a one-time, short-term, high credit as we hopefully manage to stop it out.
Okay, just to, for clarity's sake, one of, one of the things that I know that I had a learning curve with regard to budget was understanding the tax anticipation note and understanding revenue anticipation of, and what that means to borrow on a short-term basis at the lowest possible interest that we can, because we as a municipality must continue to have these services brought to the public without going into, you know, over debt. And of course, as the money comes in from the revenue and the taxes, we then pay these loans off. So that's an important concept for the public to see, that these are short-term loans as we generate the tax and we generate the revenue to pay them off. Very important. Are there any comments from the Council on item number four? Any comments from the public on the, on the floor? Any clarity? Yes. The Council, how are you, sir? And welcome. We just need the name, your name for the record.
Sure. Jay, I'm just sitting here listening to this, and we have this rainy day fund, I've heard mentioned a couple of times, and I have heard mentioned in the past. What kind of money do we have sitting around in that rainy day fund, if we know?
Good question.
So this fiscal year in 2016, it was all in about $9.4 million. But I understand that rainy day fund doesn't represent cash, it represents assets either owed to the cities or to the city, doesn't necessarily represent cash.
So it's a hypothetical number on our ledger that is not something that we can tap into, for instance, in this situation where we're going out and borrowing. And granted, we need to get a very fair rate of interest, but we're going out and borrowing nevertheless, and we pay back more than the money we're borrowing. And we have to do this because we can't avail ourselves of these rainy day funds for the short period of time that we're talking about for this note.
This has been a cash one, which only allows us to borrow up to a certain point of available cash. The city had to use whatever available cash it had before it takes on any type of debt. So it's already taken into account in number.
All right, so that, that rainy day fund, if I have a better term, it's impossible to use those funds for the purpose of getting the borrowing this money for.
It's not impossible, it's just not necessary to, because then we don't have any available for emergency.
Okay.
All right. You know, the other thing, Mr. Gus, is it's very important that when we have a rainy day fund, we're able to borrow at a, at a better rate because of that.
Well, it seems to me like we're having a liquidity crisis, otherwise we wouldn't be looking to borrow this money, and so liquidity crisis, what you have rainy day funds for, at least that's the way it works in my household, but you guys might have a different approach than I.
Thank you, Mr. Gus. Good to see you. Any other comments on item number four? Okay. And with that, folks, we'll move on to our next item. Thank you for your comments, everyone.
And files a resolution authorizing the city manager's intangible grievance for the operation of additional food trucks with the city's beach concessions.
Okay, it's the city's desire to continue to provide a wide variety of food and refreshment concessions to convenient locations, create a diversity of food choices, the excellent quality foods of the local flavor, while showing preference to local food merchants and retailers who previously provided food services. We had over the, over the last year, I think we lost one of the food trucks, and we had to, additional interest. We did another RP, and have three neutral awards this year.
Great, great. We don't have a decision yet on who the award.
Yep, we have it here.
Oh, correct.
We have a, a company called Taparia, which I believe is a single under set, of course, only Cuba, with a menu different than the other truck. We have a Snowy Island, which is a no colored shade ice, and pork chop catering company for state cheese.
Okay. Are there any comments from the Council? Cheese steak. Cheese steak. Cheese steak, exactly. Okay. We look forward to these food trucks, folks. We love food here.
I have an assessment question with respect to food that sounds really good right now. My question is, do we have a legal assessment with respect to its impact on the local restaurant on Park Avenue?
An assessment? I mean, generally, I don't know that there's a way to do an assessment, except to say that overwhelming majority of folks who except to say that overwhelming majority of folks who run food trucks own restaurants on Park Avenue.
I know.
For Bee Street, for that.
Not aware of that, as you're saying, in terms of do we have anything in terms of data, and what is the general answer, because our focus is economic development, but we just want to make sure that we've done some difference.
I don't know the how, you know, it's a great question. I don't know how you calculate, you know, restaurant data from.
Any other comments from the council on this item? Any comments from the public now on? Yes, please forward. Mr. Miles. See, I got my glasses, so I can see you from far away now. Actually, not today, Mr. Miles, though I can see him coming up. Welcome. We just need your name for the record. Good to see you.
Good evening, Ronnie Miles. I also love to eat and love food. So I have a couple questions about food trucks. Are they only going to have a location this year?
Yes, the Riverside Market, right? And other than that, I think we've got everything from last year come back.
Okay. Will we put out the RFP, do we consider the MBS event?
I don't know that a, so many projects go over a certain threshold, right?
I would like some ethnic food.
That's funny. Yeah, I think we all want the greatest possible diversity of food, right? That's the, that's the whole point.
Yes, I want pizza, I want jerk, I want, I want it all.
I like dumpling. I'm still waiting for a dumpling.
The MBE, for the most part, projects over the $100,000 limit, but also, just for the record, I had this conversation last week, and we talked about having more access to information with respect to the RFP. So in the future, obviously, because you have the potential community people who are interested in this project, you'll have the information in advance.
Well, thank you for giving Long Beach a favor.
Okay, thank you again. Thank you for your comment. Any other comments, folks, on this item? The fifth item here on the agenda tonight. With that, folks, we're going to move on to our next and last item.
I am excited. The resolution authorized publication for hearing of orders from other ordinances of the City of Long Beach regarding water and water distribution. This item is a publication only, here can be held June 6th and 70th. Item number four, which is a resolution delegated to the City Controller of the City of Long Beach, Nassau County, New York, powers to weather the issuance of $6,800,000 tax anticipation notes at South City, or so much thereof as may be necessary in anticipation of the collection of taxes levied for fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2017, and to prescribe the terms, form, and contents, and provide for sale and credit financing of such notes. Would you just move the option to this item?
I will.
I will.
Troy, that's all done?
Yes.
That's all done?
Yes.
President Oram?
Yes.
President Doris?
Yes.
Item number six is a resolution authorized publication for hearing of orders from other ordinances of the City of Long Beach regarding water and water distribution. Would you just move the option to this item?
I'll introduce that.
Second?
I'll second.
Troy, that's all done?
Yes.
That's all done?
Yes.
President Doris?
Yes.
President Doris?
Yes.
And item number six is a resolution authorized publication for hearing of orders from other ordinances of the City of Long Beach regarding water and water distribution. Would you just move the option to this item?
I'll introduce that.
I'll introduce that.
I'll second.
Troy, that's all done?
Yes.
That's all done?
Yes.
President Doris?
Yes.
President Doris?
Yes.
And item number six is a resolution authorized publication for hearing of orders from other ordinances of the City of Long Beach regarding water and water distribution. Would you just move the option to this item?
I'll introduce that.
I'll introduce that.
I'll second.
Troy, that's all done?
Yes.
That's all done?
Yes.
President Doris?
Yes.
President Doris?
Yes. Folks, that ended our city council meeting. Now we enter the good and welfare portion of our meeting. And again, I just want to remind everyone that again, we need to have the forms submitted to us to be able to participate. We do want to hear from you. This is why we ask that you fill these forms out, so that during good and welfare, we can hear what is on your mind. And for us, that's how good government works, that we hear what you have to say. And of course, we have to stick to our three-minute rule. And again, and we expect the right decorum that you would expect. Our first person is Mr. Dodge. Bill Dodge?
Wonderful. Yes, so very nice to talk to you guys. Bill Dodge, Long Beach COA. I'd like to continue by discussion from last meeting. We talked about some of these confidential settlements that were made by the city. And the one I'd like to talk about today was signed on March 29th of 2016. It offered an employee here who had alleged some three horrific acts, $85,000 in cash. And we heard at last meeting that this was an excellent deal for the city, that the settlement agreement was excellent. Well, part of the agreement also included things that that member didn't have to appear at work anymore, yet continues to collect a paycheck. And that will continue through December of 2018. That seems to be a little more than the $25,000 that the intent of that law was, but he continues to accrue sick time, personal time, terminal leave time. There were some other interesting sections that were in that agreement. One was that the city agrees to waive the application of the General Misorable Law, Section 208B, extra work by members. They're waiving law. The city waives any firearm qualifications for this individual, which allows him to continue to carry a firearm through 2018. The city agreed to waive the application of the Public Officers' Law in the event that Hayes takes up residence and contravention of the law. So now my question is, how much overtime is necessary to fill a no-show job for two years? It's two years, police sergeant for two years. Hayes, last year in 2016, made $181,863 without walking through the door. How many other low or no-show jobs have been offered as a result of settlements? How many are out there? This was confidential. Had we not changed the information, it's like the Wizard. No, Hayes couldn't talk about it, and nobody up here did talk about it, anybody that knew. So we didn't know. That's the question. How many other low or no-show jobs are there within the city other than the one we're bringing up now?
You know, I don't know how you define a no-show job, but I can play this. With respect to Carl Hayes', he did settle for $85,000. And how much did the city pay? Zero.
I agree with you. It was a wonderful deal for the city. Given, given the acts that were alleged, I think it was a spectacular deal. The city did very, the city did very well. Please don't, don't misunderstand. I agree 100% that he did an excellent job in mitigating the damage from these allegations. Absolutely.
Okay, so the city paid.
But the question is, how much did the city spend to fill in for an employee that wasn't here? There is another cost.
I don't have access to that.
Of course, that would be outside of the scope of what you're asking.
With respect to his use of time, as you also know from having boiled the settlement agreements, Mr. Hayes agreed that he is going to remain a resident of New York State and paying New York State taxes.
Absolutely.
During his absence, when he's in Texas taking care of his wife who has, I believe, stage three cancer. That's why he's there. And by the way, the city, as you know, calculated his time himself.
I can't, I'm sorry, I can't, I can't do anything that I do when I'm working in this discussion.
But, but as we all know, he's basically forfeited almost his entire payout, which is worth probably between $400,000 and $500,000 because of his use of time. So the city does realize a substantial savings in that respect. So as far as your question with respect to specific budget information, you know, I'm not, I'm not.
Well, the question for the council, let's see, man, do that is, how much did it cost to fill it where that person wasn't here? Yes, for him, that was a reasonable thing, but that's still a body that's not here. That's still an individual that doesn't make arrests, supervise employees. He's not here. And it was a good deal for all involved. But somebody's filling that. And how many others aren't?
We just have the logic with respect to Smart Recovery. So is there anyone that is in the budget team that can actually answer that question? This is a serious allegation that I'm hearing right now, and I'd like some clarification. I mean, the whole purpose is, I believe that we're not having people who are actually not showing up to work and we're paying for them. So I'm just a little concerned right now.
Well, he's using his crew time. I mean, he's entitled to use it. We just simply allowed him to use it. We did extensive research before. More research than I've ever seen in, you know, proceeding a settlement agreement. That confirms his legal eligibility to use that time. So this is not a no-show job. He's using his earned time, and he's working his payout. So there's a trade-off there.
Okay, so this is, because I'm trying to interpret what's being said. So are you saying that someone is waiving, that we as a city are waiving the law itself as it's presented, so that this can actually take place? Is that what I'm hearing?
There are two specific sections in the agreement that say exactly that. The city further agrees to waive the application of General Misorable Law, Section 208B, entitled "Extra Work by Members of the Police Force." The Hayes, hey, they engage in extra work, and it goes on from the, that is the wording of the agreement for that particular one.
And he's not giving any extra work, I think, is number one. And number two, with respect to the residency requirements, again, so Hayes is a handicapped New York State. So, and there are, I, I, there are persons who are handicapped in Texas, so, you know, by most definitions, it apparently means a New York State resident. While he gets characters like Texas from Mexico. No, not at all.
Thank you, Mr. Dodge.
Thank you.
Very interesting case, and also I agree with Ms. Morris. Important to find out what's going on here. And thank you for bringing that up.
I do appreciate you taking the time.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Dodge, thank you, thank you. Our next person is Ms. Mindy Delver. Think I said it right this time?
You said.
Oh, thank you. You're welcome, Delver.
So just sit, sit down, yeah.
It's okay. I hope you're okay.
I'm, I'm fine today. Okay. How are everybody?
Okay.
Okay. So I just want to speak about two different things. Since Ms. Diamond said that the City of Long Beach is becoming ADA compliant, which literally makes my heart sing, I wanted to speak about, there's a line in the budget about the snowmobile being $255,000, which is really wonderful. But I have pictures, which I've sent to you guys, of handicap spots with snow in them, which is not a very good thing. So I will, I took pictures. It happened multiple times this winter. It's happened so many other winters. And now that I speak to you guys, I will make sure that I send you guys a picture. So seeing that line that $255,000 is happening, we need to make sure that we have next winter there's no snow in any handicap parking spot ever again. Okay? That's good. Okay. Okay. That just upsets me to no end.
Good point.
But also, with the city becoming ADA compliant, I wanted to know if there's something could be done about the restaurants being, having all of their bathrooms that do have handicap restaurants, I mean, handicap bathrooms, if they all can be ADA compliant, because they are not. Some of them, I don't, their, their business owners strive, they're just not. And as being somebody that is, whether or not you're, whether you have chronic pain, whether you, my girlfriend just had one anectomy, and she's been on the trenches for eight weeks, and she's complaining, and people getting knee surgeries. It is just not, if this is an 2020 ADA compliant city, I think the restaurant needs to be ADA compliant in every aspect, whether they have railings on the wall, whether something needs to be done. You guys just need to know about it. I don't know if there's going to be a law or an ordinance or with something.
Certainly something we could look into.
Yeah, I mean, the law, it's in the American Misability Act, but it's, it's difficult situation, because it's private action against the homeowner.
Right.
But there, you know, there are ways the city can work, you know, the businesses that we're trying to, if we ever get a list.
And we have to do a list.
If we get a list of businesses that we are not compliant, there are certainly discussions the city can have there.
It's, it's not, it's all of them. Have I been to every single restaurant? Yes. Have they all, have I been struggling in every single restaurant? Yes. I mean, is this about anything to say? Absolutely. But you know what? Am I the only one? No, I'm not the only one. Am I the one standing or talking to that? Absolutely. I just think that if we're going to say that the city's ADA compliant, then I think we need to say we're ADA compliant in every aspect. The beach, restaurants, everywhere, the parking, the parking spots, everywhere.
Certainly his point well taken. Thanks, Governor.
And so I totally, I totally agree with you. Access in general should be a critical priority. I also feel that at some point, we should have conversations about having some more of an advisory committee with residents coupled with officers within our city to have conversations and to move forward with education as well as awareness, but also compliant.
I agree. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Delver. Certainly a very good point that you're making.
Thank you.
We will follow up with that, too.
Thank you.
Again, we should welcome all these comments. It's very important for us. Ms. Mary Golovitch, if you could, please pass over here. Well, let's move on to Fran Anderson. Hello, Ms. Anderson. Good to see you.
Thank you. Very welcome to 74 Harmony Street. I just have a question regarding the plastic bag ordinance. I should have thought about it then, but I didn't. But now that we're in the season, we're having all these festivals there, I have a question. Is there a provision in the ordinance for vendors of all the different groups that are coming into the city to comply with our plastic bag laws?
I think Ryan is a resident expert in the bag ordinance. But I believe in everyone.
And how, and if there is, how would you enforce that?
Excellent question. This is Ryan Kearney?
Yes, hello, council. So there is no specific provision in the law, but the recreation department, who handles all the events and vendors that go along with it, is aware and makes aware, makes vendors aware of our ordinance and any, any business providing, because to customers has to follow the ordinance as it's stated in the law.
Yeah, yeah. What I find interesting to say, Ms. Anderson, is that every time that I purchase something, the store owner says to me, if you take the plastic bag, I have to charge you the five cents. And of course, I don't take the plastic bag. So I think that we do see some, at least some compliance here. And certainly my experience has been that.
I think it's working. I mean, there's always going to be people at a different plane, but I think in general, people are, you know, compliant. I don't think that people want to pay for plastic bags. It's not about the five cents. I think it's more about the awareness. And that's really, I think, what your law was about in the first place. But it's possible, if you could possibly amend the law, to think about, because when we have all these fairs, there's a lot of people lying a lot of things. And I just think that there's possibility to amend that, and of course, that would be good.
We can also include in the language of the actual publicity announcement with respect to the fair, that people should just remind people to bring their bags. We can do that right away. Great, thank you.
Good point. Okay, and thank you, Governor Sheik. And we have Dina Furi. Welcome again.
Hello again. How are you? Two, just two things. Last time, the last one, oh, the last time I was here, you spoke about the boat launch and lighting at the boat launch. Now that we're coming into more of a boating season, I would ask if that really be looked at? As I said, it gets very dark even at night, and even though the launch might close after, after dark, or we close at the, at nine o'clock, it's still a point for emergency use, in the event that somebody has issues. So there should be some beacon of soul and sort to know that is there. That's number one. Number two, my other favorite subject is to talk about the boards.
I want to just jump in and mention, so we took a look particularly at the recreational board, which you applied for. There's only one other person other than you who's applying. It's a seven-member board. So we're kind of going to offer, we don't, we don't have people yet, but, you know, we'll go, have a process, try to, if you can help us approve more, we'd love it. But, you know, we'll go through the process and try to recruit. If you can help us recruit more, we'd love it.
Well, I think that, I think that, again, it goes back, this is going back to probably a number of people who may have felt that they lost. The time slot, we were supposed to be doing this back in October, November. It may have gotten past the holidays to do it. We are seven months past when we first said it. I don't, I don't believe that again, and you know, I have this conversation, that enough people are aware of those boards as a whole. And it's not just recreation. I don't believe, I know other people have applied for other positions, whether it be architecturally new boards or epic boards or any of the other boards. I don't believe that there's ever really been a full-on, a full-on, you know, process to get some vacation to the people. I know we talk about it a lot. And I'm not disagreeing that you don't try to communicate as best as possible. But when those are very important boards or positions to have, we did a great job, I have to tell you. They go away on vacation. I got more phone calls, text messages about beach passes being going on sale. But we have boards here that are chicken in place. And people who should actually be holding sessions, having meetings regarding on these boards, that's the kind of stuff that's not getting done. And I think they should be independent. And I think that if you put, if you need to put somebody, if you said it, there's only two of us. If you tell me I need to build separate positions or get separate people to join the board, how do you do that? We could do that. And I'm sure that there are other boards like that, fully the same. I mean, when you look at the list, I'll go back. I know somebody's on the architectural review board. They seem not on the architectural review board. But that tells me that we haven't met. Those boards have not met. So it's purpose, it's not serving a purpose that we're intended to do. And again, I'll go back. It's seven months since we talked about it. There's stuff that we can do. And like to say, thank you, the clock is a ride. They haven't been sold yet, but, you know, check on it now that they're back. But there are things that can get done if the right people are timely to evolve. So I would ask that we go through that process again and get people out there for those.
We will continue to request applications. Thank you.
Mary, thank you. Good suggestion. Our next person is Mr. Lou Dubon.
Dubon, you did again. But then, needless, we can't consider all about iStar. There are also the things that are said about it, like they're written in paper. It seems to me at this point, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know whether you can answer, that you guys are being put under arrest for the spread of a $104 million lawsuit if you don't sign up to iStar to agree to have iStar be granted to, the pilot be granted to iStar. It's a very strange situation, because it sounds like, you know, you guys are being forced into saying that you agreed to have the pilot program. If not, we're going to be sued for $100, $200, $4 million. I don't know whether there's comment on that. I don't know whether that is legal for them to do, because it's like signing a contract with someone putting a gun to your head. It sounds like they are putting a gun to this city of Long Beach. Is there anything you could comment about it? And again, I realize it's all this illegal stuff that's going on with it, but is there any comment?
Just a little, $105 million, by the way.
All right. That was really here right there, you know?
Just like that. It's really just not advisable, given the state's investigation or anybody on the council. Sorry. It's just not advisable, given the state's, now that everybody's aware. Sort of the cat's out of the bag in regards to what's at stake in this litigation. It's just simply not advisable for the council to comment on that, at least at this time.
Right, I understand. Actually, there was an interesting editorial's newsletter today saying that they started at $125 million for pilot.
$109 to $109 to $82.
Initially, they said when they had their application before the zoning board, that they got money, they're ready to go, shovel ready to go. And so, you know, I know that's not part of the zoning board's view to say what they have money, not that they obviously started off from not telling the truth about this whole thing. So it's just...
Everybody's aware of this, we were testimony, and all I can say is it's going to factor in what it gives you to file. So again, it's something that you really can't discuss, make prejudice in case.
Okay.
In case outlaw, you can't risk prejudice again.
I can't say that would be the answer, but I feel that you could go down the cover that it's just, you know...
And just, and remember also, it is the 90s, ultimately, on whether or not you grant the request for a patient.
Right. And they wrote all around the public hearing, if you will?
That's what they said to me. That's the first we heard about it.
Okay, good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dubon. It was a pleasure to have you come on. Mr. Jay Gossel. Hey, Jay.
Good evening, again, Jay Gossel. I was also here a week ago and heard the whole iStar informational session. And I guess it could be summarized that the city is contemplating capitulating to iStar's request for a more firm show of support out of fear of litigation with iStar. Is that accurate?
Again, Jay, no one's, no one's going to comment on it or whatever. The state's just simply, why?
I'm summarizing what I think.
That's what I'm concerned about. It's a rhetorical question.
Okay, well, all right, that's fine. Nevertheless, I personally have two situations that I'm involved in with the city, where I've communicated in unequivocal terms my intention to sue the city. Granted, I'm not iStar, I'm not pressing you guys $105 million. I don't have, you know, white shoe law terms on speed dial. But I'm going to be suing the city. Mr. Ickes, he should probably be a defendant in one of those. Means the city not going to be able to represent itself, so you have to go to outside counsel. I assume you're going to have to go to outside counsel. These are two very avoidable lawsuits. One of them happens to be in the nature of pre-lease contracts, similar to the iStar deal, or the potential lawsuit that's going to flow for myself. The city seems to be a little inconsistent in terms of how tolerant it is for engaging in litigation and the costs associated with it. Like I said, I don't know, maybe you guys are in the dark. Maybe Mr. Ickes, he doesn't inform you. Maybe Jack doesn't inform you. Bottom line is, this is a couple of lawsuits that I personally have in the pipe, totally preventable. But you guys seem intent on litigating. Either you fear litigation costs or you don't. You guys got to decide which is going to be.
Thank you, Mr. Gossel. We have Ms. Majiba Smith. Ms. Majiba Smith here. Thank you. Please come forward. Welcome. And how are you?
I'm a little nervous. It's my first time. Hello. This is my four-year-old daughter, Makina.
Oh, welcome. Welcome to the family. Hello.
Hi, um, you can just bear with me. My name is Makina Smith. I am a woman from the Bronx, looking for the hurricane Sandy. And, um, it's been hard for me. And I suffered from post-traumatic stress disorder. So when I go into agencies and ask for help, they just turn me away. And, um, the owners of Pine Street, Frankie Scott, they're beautiful people. I was renting a house on West Market Street before they ever came. And they saved me a present and they helped me with an apartment in the Bronx, because everything was damaged here. But that apartment in the Bronx, it was on the first floor. They didn't give me no heat. So I've been there for the last four years. And when I gave birth to my daughter, they removed my daughter from me, because at the time I didn't have nowhere to stay. It's been a year now. I have my daughter back with me. And I would like to really, okay, back to Long Beach and answer something. Every time I go to the welfare office, they turn me away with nothing. I've been staying with my cousin on Pine Street for the past three months. But I can no longer stay with her, because she's not going to be with me, because I'm not supposed to be there. So my thing to you guys is, I know I have the post-traumatic, I go for the help. But it's just that now to keep my baby with me and to start over again, when I go to that agency, it's a welfare, they just took me away. And mentally, it's taken a toll on me. And I'm just here tonight, just answering that.
Ms. Smith, we're so sorry you're going through this. And you have a beautiful daughter. And what, what we could suggest is that, you know, there, we do have folks here, that we have social workers here, we have people that have expertise in advocacy. And what you need is help with that, with advocacy. We, please leave your, we do have your name, and what we'll do is, we'll see what we can do to help you.
Thank you so much. Can I have the number? Can you mention my number, spirit?
Sure. You can stay with us. Ryan, Ryan will give you all of the information you need. And again, this is welcome to Long Beach City Council.
I love you.
And we'll see what we can do, okay?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. With that, we have this highly session. The session is quick to see you. Welcome again.
Thank you.
I keep missing that Hungry Bowls thing and I have, I can't forget any year that you and I were there together.
It was wonderful. I'm looking forward to Pride weekend, and I just have two concerns. One is safety and one is money. And I've attended a couple of meetings, a Chamber of Commerce meeting and a volunteer meeting. And it sounds like the Pride organization is not paying Long Beach anything, that we're just hoping to make some money, like on beach tickets. Is that right? They're not paying us anything with the beach, are they?
I don't think that's right at all.
Oh, good. I'm glad. All right. Well, thank you. Explain. Also, I went to a volunteer meeting and there were very few volunteers there. I know that's not your area, but it does make me nervous. I'm hoping that the group will have more volunteers than I saw at that meeting. There's another one tomorrow night. There were only about 10 people there who were volunteering. And if we're expecting between 10 and 30,000 people, they're going to need a lot more volunteers than that. And they listed all the volunteers that they needed. There were many. Also, when asked about safety, the organizer said that they had been in touch with many different police departments and different organizations. But that's how they put it, they had been in touch with. But do we have any response yet as to, you know, who's going to back up the Long Beach Police Department? Because if there's that many people coming in for three days, we will need help, I think. And then also, our police department, I'm sure, will be doing a lot of overtime work. And I'm wondering if we have to pay that overtime.
So I know that the police commissioner is probably raring to respond to the safety. So while he walks off on a very simple answer, which is, as we've said a variety of times before, so the city will track its expenses, while obviously certain factors are quite different, but with any other major event, like the city will track its expenses and we expect reimbursement.
From Pride?
Yep, good. And that's part of the grant that they've been awarding from New York State.
All right. Also, with the beach tickets, you're expecting to sell maybe 10,000 beach tickets or so. Are those going to be on sale ahead of time, or are they going to be lining up to buy tickets?
Yeah, this has been on the point of preparation after going on to that as well. But incidentally, that is separate from the reimbursement.
Also, if I can just sort of guard your question on volunteers. My understanding that while the meeting was not the most well-attended, the initial volunteer recruitment meeting, there's been ongoing recruitment online from a bunch of different sources. And that amount of money, the amount of volunteers that have come forward has increased quite significantly. That's the end of the talk.
I won't speak in any detail about security measures for that meeting, but Pride was not contacted about this one. I have a meeting in the city manager's office. I have decision makers and hierarchy officials from New York City Police Department, the chief of public from Nassau County, a major from the state police, a captain from the MTA, the New York State Police Intelligence Unit, is bearing strategic statements and risk assessment for me on a weekly basis. So we have a lot being placed. I've already engaged South Nassau into assisting us with a medical director for the entire time of the event. There's certain pharmacists that have to be done. I do, we have a pack of resources. We have a command post that is going to be set up, the state of the art, that we're able to position very close to the event. And we've been working, meeting, four meetings a week minimum with the Pride to discuss communication and safety and the like. And I feel that we are prepared going into this. We have requested resources from other agencies and they have complied with those resources or those requests. So I do feel we are getting to an area. I've spoken with the Southern County Police that posted this. I've spoken with the State Park Police, that have posted one out in the East Park. And the flavor of this one seems to be different from some of the others. And it does appear that the group coming to participate in this are, you know, wildly inappropriate. They're more fairly, with this event, we're more fairly planning the event. My biggest concern is that something is being told, the pulse from Nassau in Florida, and more enforcement copycats and other people trying to make a statement do concern us. So we are prepared for worst, hoping for the best. I am monitoring for pre-sales. They are pre-selling positions in the parade. They are pre-selling beach tickets. They are pre-selling the events on the beach and all those things. So that's how we look at probably a number of potential attendees. The fact that there was some, a great deal of difficulty locking in a headline for the Sunday concert prevented them from doing a bad advertising. So I think that the unintended consequence of that is only a diminution of participation number, so that I think it's going to be a lot more manageable due to a lot of those factors. But I have been in contact with a number of agencies to support our efforts.
Thank you, Commissioner.
This, yeah, just a comment. The session in regards to the beach passes, they will be able to set up at the train station, so folks will be able to purchase beach passes right as they get off the train. And they also will be selling beach passes, as they are right now, ahead of time, through the network. But in the parking lots that they're securing, mostly east of us, they will be selling beach passes there as well. At the 5K race, which is early in the morning, beach passes normally would be sold, but they would be sold on then. So any opportunity we have where there's crowded people to sell beach passes, to try and mitigate any traffic and folks will get beach passes, we are consciously doing. So thank you.
Certainly, excellent question to...
Present to our event, someone just made a suggestion for the next meeting. Maybe the meeting right before the event, that we would have someone here to represent Pride at our next city council meeting. This way, if there are any additional questions, the residents will have the opportunity to ask.
I think that's an excellent suggestion. Fully agree with you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think if we don't have any more comment, let's move to our next, to our, hopefully, our last person. And that's Mr. Delory. Mr. Delory is still here with us. And we want to thank you for staying with us this late. And all of you for staying this late with us at the city council. And again, we look forward to hearing from you too, from everyone. Mr. Delory, please feel free, if you just give us the name for the record and we'll move forward.
Mike Delory, six years walking. Thank you for calling me last, because I didn't want to. I'll make it very brief. I did want to speak to the Capitol plant, because I thought it was exceptionally put together. What a recommendation I would make is for the Public Works Department to look at the area of Park Avenue to Olive Street on Emmanuel Boulevard. Rather than, it's near a church, near business, and it's one block off the main thoroughfare. I went in last night to double-check my opinion. And saying the National Boulevard here, from Park Avenue to Olive, on the west side, south now. I'm going to keep it brief and funny, because I called the DPW the other day, because a pilot was running within 24 hours. was running within 24 hours. I called the Nassau County today because it's Long Beach Road near Speedway. There's no way the county would beat our city in how fast they do pilots. So, that's my, my last thing that I want to say is when you do coordinate with the walks, the diamond walks, I'd be happy to coordinate or host some kind of gathering meeting so you don't have to explain multiple issues because there are many, as you know, present terrorists. That's all I have to say for tonight. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your hard work. And I do appreciate everything you do.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Delore. Thank you for participating.
This is the article that was in today's news day that Mr. Dubon had mentioned, in case you haven't seen it.
Thank you. Thank you again. Thank you, Mr. Delore. Thanks, everyone, for staying with us for this hour and get home safely.